Well, good evening. I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order, today being September 25th, 2018. The meeting tonight is being recorded by the PBD School Committee's recording secretary, Leanna Harris, and it's also being broadcast live on PBD Access Telecommunications, PAT. The matters listed on our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'd like to first start off the meeting if everybody could please stand for a moment of silence. And I'm gonna turn it over now to our superintendent, Ms. Murtagh, for the introduction of two of our students from the South School, two spectacular Road Runners that are here today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the pleasure of introducing Courtney Baker. She's very active in our community. She enjoys playing many sports and is currently on the PBD Travel Soccer Team. She's a good teammate, tries her hottest, and always has a smile on the field. She really enjoys school and takes great pride in her hard work and effort. Courtney is beginning her sixth year with the Girl Scout Troop Number 66140 at the South Memorial School. She enjoys spending time with her troop and attending Girl Scout Camp in the summer. Courtney, if you can join the mayor up here? I also have the pleasure of introducing Ryan Rich. He's looking forward to a great year in fifth grade. He enjoys all of his classes, but his favorites are math and science. He enjoys playing lacrosse, basketball, soccer, flag football, and his favorite activity, of course, is Fortnite. He's excited about learning to play the saxophone this year. When he grows up, he wants to be an engineer. Please join us, Ryan.
(inaudible)
I always feel like the meeting just goes downhill after that.[124.18][124.18](laughter) Yes, so Ms. Murtagh, I think we have another introduction?
Thank you. Dr. Higgins is joining us this evening, but there's one thing, a new initiative that the leadership team and I are bringing forth. It's called PBD Gives, and it is a community project that we have ten schools in our district, and each month a school is going to generate a community project that's going to go throughout the school district. And Dr. Higgins is going to explain his for the month of September, so please join us, Mark.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we'll go downhill, so we'll try to be ready.[160.16][160.16](laughter) Fall in that crowd would be tough, so...
Yeah, that's a big fall.[163.16][163.16](laughter)
But in collaboration with Superintendent Murtagh, the South School for September is Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month, and so we have a few activities I just wanted to share very briefly. This Friday, September 28th, we're inviting all of the kindergarten, excuse me, pre-K through fifth grade students to wear pajamas to school as an awareness event, and the students in grades six through 12 are gonna be able to wear gold, gold being the color for pediatric cancer awareness. And we're asking all the students, regardless of what grade they're in, to bring small stuffed animals, preferably, I might have some examples there for everybody, the TY Beanie Babies, these big eyes here. So I, we've had, we're overflowing on our second box already at the school, and so I've heard from a few schools, and everyone's been bringing them in, and I'm sure as the week goes on, Friday will be a big day. So we have that event going on, we're talking about that with our children. Also, on Sunday, I want to make sure everybody's aware that the South School's gonna be the host for the beginning and end of Ella's Army Road Race, and I'm sure that's gonna be a wonderful PBD community event, and I'm sure you're all aware, just wanna make sure I share that. So we have two important things happening at the school to wait, or, excuse me, raise awareness for a very, very important cause, and we're proud to be doing that. I'm happy Superintendent Murtagh is a great idea, and we're happy to kinda kick it off with this, and then participate each month in all the different activities that are taking place.
Thank you, Dr. Higgins. One more thing, and what it stands for, what PBD Gives stands for, it's gratitude initiative towards volunteerism and empowering service learning. So collaborating with different partners and giving back, helping and celebrating as a school community. So that's what this initiative and this goal is going to go forth. And Dr. Higgins, thank you so much for starting it off.
You got it. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we will go to the approval of minutes. We do have committee meeting minutes from September 11th, 2018, regular school committee meeting minutes.
Motion to receive and approve.
Second.
Further motion by Mrs. Dunn for approval, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call vote on approval, please.
Yes.
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 Great, thank you. Our next item, approval of bills. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant A, number 3951, dated September 21st, in the amount of $179,788.06, subject to audit.
Second. Great, thank you. We've heard the motion for approval of Warrant A by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Great, thank you. Our next item, approval of bills. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant A, number 3951, dated September 21st, in the amount of $179,788.06, subject to audit.
Second. Great, thank you. We've heard the motion for approval of Warrant A by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant B, number 3952, in the amount of $289,847.91, subject to audit.
Second. Further motion for approval of Warrant B by Mrs. Carpenter, motion seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant C, number 3953, dated September 25th, in the amount of $214,413.67, subject to audit.
Second. Further motion for approval of Warrant C by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant D, number 3955, dated September 25th, in the amount of $2948,466.51, subject to audit.
Second. Further motion for approval of Warrant C by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant C, number 3953, dated September 25th, in the amount of $214,413.67, subject to audit.
Second. Further motion for approval of Warrant C by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant D, number 3955, dated September 25th, in the amount of $2948,466.51, subject to audit.
Second. Further motion for approval of Warrant C by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Great, thank you. Our next item, approval of bills. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant A, number 3951, dated September 21st, in the amount of $179,788.06, subject to audit.
Second. Great, thank you. We've heard the motion for approval of Warrant A by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote on approval, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Our next item, approval of bills. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant A, number 3951, dated September 21st, in the amount of $179,788.06, subject to audit.
Second. Great, thank you. We've heard the motion for approval of Warrant A by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant B, number 3952, in the amount of $289,847.91, subject to audit.
Second. Further motion for approval of Warrant B by Mrs. Carpenter, motion seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant C, number 3953, dated September 25th, in the amount of $214,413.67, subject to audit.
Second. Further motion for approval of Warrant B by Mrs. Carpenter, motion seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant D, number 3955, dated September 25th, in the amount of $2948,466.51, subject to audit.
Second. Further motion for approval of Warrant B by Mrs. Carpenter, motion seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant C, number 3953, dated September 25th, in the amount of $214,413.67, subject to audit.
Second. Further motion for approval of Warrant C by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant C, number 3953, dated September 25th, in the amount of $214,413.67, subject to audit.
Second. Further motion for approval of Warrant C by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant D, number 3955, dated September 25th, in the amount of $2948,466.51, subject to audit.
Second. Further motion for approval of Warrant C by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant D, number 3955, dated September 25th, in the amount of $2948,466.51, subject to audit.
Second. Further motion for approval of Warrant D by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant D, number 3955, dated September 25th, in the amount of $2948,466.51, subject to audit.
Second. Further motion for approval of Warrant D by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if I was gonna bring this up at my subcommittee or now, but I just wanted to check and see if everybody received the FY19 Grants for Approval, the list of them. Does everyone have that list?
Yes.
If it's okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve that list as it was presented before you.
Second. Can you repeat that, please, Mrs. Carpenter?
The FY19 Grants for Approval, they were in, were they in the packet or separate?
No packet.
They're in the packet.
Okay. You've heard the motion for approval by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Amico. On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. LaFleur. Was there anything out of the ordinary with any of these grants, or are these pretty much annual grants that we apply for and receive a similar amount?
They're annual entitlement grants.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
What's nice is some of them did increase, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go to continued business?
We need a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vote pending. Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Sorry, I was distracted by this amazing new artwork we have. It's pretty good. Okay, continued business. First item, Mrs. Dunn, MSBA Higgins Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next meeting of the Higgins School Building Committee will take place this Thursday, September 27th, at 4:00 PM, here in the Higgins Conference Room. As the mayor just noted, we are still completing some things. These artwork, this artwork was completed by the artist, Rob Surratt, and it's amazing to see him create these, and this was a very special piece of the Higgins completion, getting these up and in place. And for folks at home, I don't know what their view entails, but these are portraits of huge figures in U.S. history.
Great.
And they're very, very nice. A lot of the different touches at Higgins are now being completed. This artwork, we have a wall to preserve the history of the staff and administrators here, and throughout the building, things are now being completed as we wrap up this project.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Hockman?
Mr. Mayor, if I can go back, I've been informed that in order to spend the grant money that we just approved to receive, we must make a vote to affirmatively spend the money, so I would ask maybe Ms. Carpenter if she wishes to make that vote. Is that motion?
The motion is just to spend the money? Make a motion to spend the money? You can just amend my motion.
On school-related business.
To approve and spend. You can just add spend.
Motion for approval by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. All in favor?
Yes.
It's a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hockman. Okay, next item under continued business is school start time surveys. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. So the committee has been provided with some sample surveys. We've asked them for their input if they wanted any changes. The one that is in your packet is what I believe we're gonna be sending out. We were just gonna tailor it, you know, to PBD, where any spots that it doesn't say PBD, this is for the student. This is the school start time survey draft for students. So I guess I'm just looking to see if there is anything last minute changes, or anything you'd like to add to it.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mr. Olympia?
Through the chair. The results of the survey, are they gonna be stratified, like as far as, are we gonna know high school responses versus middle school responses? Because I think this is kinda driven by the high school, and I would like to see results, seeing what the parents and the students, the high school students and parents, believe versus maybe middle school or even elementary, because there's a lot of high school students that have after-school obligations, such as maybe caring for siblings and jobs to go to, and I think if, I'd almost weigh those results a little more versus maybe some middle school responses. So I was just curious, when we do get these surveys back, are we gonna be able to say, okay, fifty-something percent of high school students and parents, you know, agree this is a good idea, or, you know, that kind of thing? And also, too, with the parents, the parent survey, I noticed that there wasn't any, it said something, grade six through 12, there was no response for maybe, again, because it'll impact elementary, one K through five, there was no choice for a K through five.
I'm not sure, was that on the parent survey or just that student one?
Parent.
I think six through 12 is just for the student one.
Um, I thought the parent was similar.
Point of information, yeah, the parent one, just six through 12.
The parent one is just six through 12.
So I think we might wanna...
So we wanna do?
K through five.
K through, well, all grades?
Right, right.
All grades, I'm not sure. This is actually another school survey, so we're just gonna tweak that.
It would be number two on the parent survey, to adjust it.
I think that's a good point, Mr. Olympia.
Yeah, just give us more insight. I feel like the elementary and the high school are really the ones that are gonna be, you know, impacted potentially of any changes, so it would be nice to have that type of data available and see.
Okay, so we can make those changes.
Any other thoughts or comments, Mr. Anodes?
Just following up on that, there is one under the educator section. It just says, "I work at the middle school, the high school, or both." Doesn't give the option of elementary. So as long as that's in there and we're covering everything, I think we'll be good.
Good, thank you. Mrs. Dunn?
I think that the changes to be made to make this more specific for PBD will really help, because this was designed for a regional school district. I also would like to mention that in here, in each of these surveys, they reflect a link to a school department webpage dealing with frequently asked questions about school start times and all the research that's out there. A lot of that information, the general information, can be provided to us by the MASC. They have some great materials, they're running some good trainings or informational seminars about this as well for school districts that are looking to change start times, and they have one coming up, I'm sorry, I haven't got the date off the top of my head, but I will look it up, they have a presentation on what some schools went through already to change their start and ending times, and it's all good information, and they will also provide some help to put it up on our webpage, so just put that out.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Next item under continued business is handbooks. Mrs., oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, if I can. So thank you for putting this on the agenda and together, Ms. Carpenter. Maybe through the mayor to Superintendent Murtagh, do you think that, first of all, do you have any idea or an expectation as to when these surveys will be distributed?
I'm hoping sooner than later. We can try to get them done and out. I will talk to my administrative assistants and see when we can get that done. Let me work on that, hoping maybe the first or second week of October, if that's, it's...
Well, I guess maybe if I can, again, through the mayor to you, Ms. Murtagh, work backwards. Is it feasible to get the results of the survey and this back on our agenda for October 23rd?
See what we can do.
If we can maybe set that as a goal and a target, and I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Continued business, handbooks. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last meeting, we received a copy of the elementary, the middle, and the high school Student and Parent Legal Guardian Handbook, and today we've received a revised copy of the high school level handbook. So I would like to make a motion for the school committee to receive and accept the elementary, the middle, and the revised high school handbook for distribution and use among our families. So moved.
Second. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Any comments? Roll call for approval, please?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Okay, next item, public participation. Is anyone in the audience that would like to come forward? Their opportunity is now. Okay, our next item, the superintendent's report. Turn it over to Superintendent Murtagh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I explained PBD Gives, which is our new initiative. Very excited about that. The second is the donations. Mr. Daniel Collins donated two $500 donations to PBD High School from New York Life, so with gratitude, hopefully our committee will approve.
Motion to receive and approve with gratitude and send a thank you letter to that effect.
Second.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
You've heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. All in favor? Thank you, and I will just mention again, this is numerous donations by Mr. Collins, who has been a great friend to the school department and the school system, so I wanna offer my thanks as well.
And the city.
And the city.
Thank you. Mr. Buckley has given us a surplus book letter. There are some very outdated books at the high school, and I would like for the committee to be able to let me know if I can give them either to students or to disposals.
Any thoughts on this topic? I'll go to Mrs. Dunn, then Mr. Amico.
I would like to make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent, and then I have some comments on the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. On the motion, I'll go back to you, Mrs. Dunn.
Again, you know, I will always ask that the extra textbooks be offered to students, and in this case, I'd also like to know if we could offer these to Nick Blaisdell for his tutoring program, if these would be of any help. I know you, they're saying that the math textbooks are out of date, and so I have no idea if they would be, you know, available or helpful to the students, but I would like to see, because his tutoring program has really been such a boon to the city.
Yep.
That's a great idea. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. I will most certainly reach out to him as well.
Okay, 'cause I don't know, with the new math, and then the new math, and then the newer new math? I don't know which new math that is.
I will definitely reach out.
They lost me in fourth grade, I'm telling you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Amico?
Actually, Ms. Dunn beat me to the punch. I wanted to be in favor of what Ms. Murtagh said, so...
Okay. Okay, we do have a motion on the floor, then, all in favor?
I think we need a roll call for surplus.
We do?
I think so.
Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Now we will go to the approval of minutes. We do have committee meeting minutes from September 11th, 2018, regular school committee meeting minutes.
Motion to receive and approve. Second.
Further motion by Mr. Anodes for approval, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
We have two out-of-state field trips. PBD Veterans Memorial High School is, would like to go to Washington DC, March 10th to the 15th, 2019.
Oh, I'll make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Okay.
Second.
Further motion by Mr. Anodes for approval, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Abstain. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. In your school committee packet, you have the monthly expenditure report, as well as the monthly hiring status report. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Murtagh. I did wanna add to that, Superintendent Murtagh and I wanted to announce that next week, October 2nd, yes, next week, we are being, excuse me, being visited by the MSBA. We, as you are aware, we as a committee put forward two statement of interests. One was for new windows and upgrades to the utility systems at the Welch School, and for a feasibility study to determine the needs of the center school. The MSBA, for the first time, has decided to visit the city of PBD, and they will be visiting both of those schools on Tuesday, October 2nd. That does not mean that they have approved our request, but it is a visit for them to[751.01]
the high school students and parents believe versus maybe middle school or even elementary. Because there's a lot of high school students that have after-school obligations, such as maybe caring for siblings and jobs to go to. And I think if, I'd almost weigh those results a little more versus maybe some middle school responses. So I was just curious, when we do get these surveys back, are we gonna be able to say, okay, 50-something percent of high school students and parents, you know, agree this is a good idea or, you know, that kind of thing. And also, too, with the parents, the parent survey, I noticed that there wasn't any, it said something, grade six through 12. There was no response for maybe, again, because it'll impact elementary, one K through five. There was no choice for K through five.
I'm not sure. Was that on the parent survey or just that student one?
I thought parent.
I think six through 12 is just for the student one. Do I have another one?
I thought I saw the parent was similar.
Point of information, yeah, the parent one, just six to 12.
The parent one is just six through 12.
So I think we might wanna...
So we wanna do...
K through five.
K through, well, all grades.
Right, right.
All grades. I'm not sure. This is actually another school survey, so we're just gonna tweak that.
It would be number two on the parent survey, to adjust it.
I think that's a good point, Mr. Olympio.
Yeah, just give us more insight. I feel like the elementary and the high school are really the ones that are gonna be, you know, impacted potentially of any changes. So it'd be nice to have that type of data available to see.
Okay, so we can make those changes.
Any other thoughts or comments, Mr. Anodes?
Just following up on that. There is one under the educator section. It just says, "I work at the middle school, the high school, or both." Doesn't give the option of elementary. So as long as that's in there and we're covering everything, I think we'll be good.
Good, thank you. Mrs. Dunn?
I think that the changes to be made to make this more specific for PBD will really help, because this was designed for a regional school district. I also would like to mention that in here, in each of these surveys, they reflect a link to a school department webpage dealing with frequently asked questions about school start times and all the research that's out there. A lot of that information, the general information, can be provided to us by the MASC. They have some great materials. They're running some good trainings or informational seminars about this as well for school districts that are looking to change start times. And they have one coming up. I'm sorry, I haven't got the date off the top of my head, but I will look it up. They have a presentation on what some schools went through already to change their start and ending times. And it's all good information, and they will also provide some help to put it up on our webpage. So just put that out.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Next item under continued business is handbooks. Mrs., oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, if I can. So thank you for putting this on the agenda and together, Ms. Carpenter. Maybe through the mayor to Superintendent Murtagh, do you think that, first of all, do you have any idea or an expectation as to when these surveys will be distributed?
I'm hoping sooner than later. We can try to get them done and out. I will talk to my administrative assistants and see when we can get that done. Let me work on that, hoping maybe the first or second week of October, if that's...
Well, I guess maybe if I can, again, through the mayor to you, Ms. Murtagh, work backwards. Is it feasible to get the results of the survey and this back on our agenda for October 23rd?
See what we can do.
If we can maybe set that as a goal and...
Yes.
A target, and I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Continued business, handbooks. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last meeting, we received a copy of the elementary, the middle, and the high school student and parent legal guardian handbook. And today, we've received a revised copy of the high school level handbook. So I would like to make a motion for the school committee to receive and accept the elementary, the middle, and the revised high school handbook for distribution and use among our families. So moved.
Second. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Any comments? Roll call for approval, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Okay. Next item, public participation. Is anyone in the audience that would like to come forward? Their opportunity is now. Okay. Our next item, the superintendent's report. Turn it over to Superintendent Murtagh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I explained PBD Gives, which is our new initiative. Very excited about that. The second is the donations. Mr. Daniel Collins donated two $500 donations to PBD High School from New York Life. So with gratitude, hopefully, our committee will...
Motion to receive and approve with gratitude and send a thank you letter to that effect.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
You've heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. All in favor? Thank you. And I will just mention again, this is numerous donations by Mr. Collins, who has been a great friend to the school department and the school system. So I want to offer my thanks as well.
And the city.
And the city.
Thank you. Mr. Buckley has given us a surplus book letter. There are some very outdated books at the high school, and I would like for the committee to be able to let me know if I can give them either to students or to dispose of them.
Any thoughts on this topic? I'll go to Mrs. Dunn, then Mr. Amico.
I would like to make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent, and then I have some comments on the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. On the motion, I'll go back to you, Mrs. Dunn.
Again, you know, I will always ask that the extra textbooks be offered to students. And in this case, I'd also like to know if we could offer these to Nick Blaisdell for his tutoring program, if these would be of any help. I know you, they're saying that the math textbooks are out of date. And so I have no idea if they would be, you know, available or helpful to the students. But I would like to see, because his tutoring program has really been such a boon to the city.
That's a great idea. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. I will most certainly reach out to him as well.
Okay. Because I don't know, with the new math, and then the new math, and then the newer new math? I don't know which new math that is.
I will definitely reach out.
They lost me in fourth grade, I'm telling you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Amico?
Actually, Ms. Dunn beat me to the punch. I wanted to be in favor of what Ms. Murtagh said, so.
Okay. Okay. Do you have a motion on the floor, then? All in favor?
I think we need a roll call for surplus.
We do?
I think so.
Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. We have two out-of-state field trips. PBD Veterans Memorial High School is, would like to go to Washington, D.C. March 10th to the 15th, 2019.
I'll make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
Further motion by Mr. Anodes for approval, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. The next out-of-state field trip is to New York City. Higgins Middle School goes each year in May, for your approval.
I'll make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
Further motion for approval by Mr. Anodes, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. In your school committee packet, you have the monthly expenditure report as well as the monthly hiring status report. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Murtagh. I did want to add to that, Superintendent Murtagh and I wanted to announce that next week, October 2nd, yes, next week, we are being, excuse me, being visited by the MSBA. We, as you are aware, we as a committee put forward two statement of interests. One was for new windows and upgrades to the utility systems at the Welch School, and for a feasibility study to determine the needs of the center school. The MSBA, for the first time, has decided to visit the city of PBD, and they will be visiting both of those schools on Tuesday, October 2nd. That does not mean that they have approved our request, but it is a visit for them to learn more about our requests and about the condition and the needs of those schools. So we'll certainly be, we're looking forward to that day and to show those schools to the committee members and the representatives from the MSBA. And we certainly will follow up with information to all of you and to the city as we learn from the MSBA what the next steps may be or if there's additional information they may need. Okay? All right. Our next item, written communications. I do not believe we have any today. And we will go now to subcommittee reports. We'll start out, education subcommittee. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will be scheduling a meeting soon. You should all be looking out for a notice to that effect.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Finance Subcommittee, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I'd like to announce that the finance Subcommittee, the committee as a whole, met this evening in executive session. We took a vote to approve the Unit B contract, so I'm bringing it forward to the open session to take another vote. So I'm happy to announce that all of the hard work of the school committee and the Unit B administrators have finally summed up a contract. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the PBD School Administrators Association and the PBD School Committee through, it's September 1st, 2018, through August 1st, 2021.
Second. Further motion for approval by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 That is all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. School Safety Subcommittee, Mr. Olympio?
I scheduled for a meeting Tuesday, October 9th, at 6:00, right before our regularly scheduled school committee meeting.
Great, thank you. Athletics and Wellness, Mrs. Carpenter?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Quality and Standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three, I'm sorry, excuse me, three items up for this second reading. These are policies that concern student activity counts. So first one is policy JJF, motion to accept and approve. So moved.
Second. Further motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. The second policy, I'd like to make a motion that policy JFABE, educational opportunities for military children, be accepted and approved for second reading. So moved.
Second. Further motion by Mrs. Dunn for approval, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. The third policy, I'm making a motion to accept and approve for second reading, policy JFABF, educational opportunities for foster care children. So moved.
Second. You've heard the motion for approval by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you, everyone. And, Mr. Chairman, I would like to bring up an item that I would like to ask the committee's permission to refer to quality and standards. And it may require some involvement on the school safety Subcommittee as well. Looking at some of our policies, I believe we need a policy concerning parking in the school safety zones. And I was contacted by the Traffic Division at the Police Department. So we'll be working in conjunction with them and with our Subcommittee to craft some appropriate language on our side to accompany the language that the police need for enforcement on the properties. And I think some of the issues we'd be looking at would be to delineate specific school safety zones that need to be marked, as well as making sure that every school has either a school safety Subcommittee or that there is a Subcommittee on the School Council that can work with the Police Department if there are any traffic issues at the school. And that kind of a partnership will help everyone so that everyone knows where they can park, where they can stop. It's all to protect the safety of the students and in some cases, the staff at these different schools. So I'd like to make a motion that that issue be referred to quality and standards and with the proviso that if we need to, we will be referring some things to the Safety Committee as well.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Motion made by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Anodes. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council and Advisory Board's liaison, Mrs. Dunn?
Actually, we're awaiting the election of the Student Advisory Board. I think they may have been elected on Friday, and we'll know those new members' names. And the Subcommittee members will meet with those students to give them some additional information on their role. And also, we've been contacted to have a meeting with the City Council Liaison Subcommittee, and that's in the process of being scheduled with Mr. Spanos.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Building and Grounds, Mr. Amico?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the chair of the committee. I'd like to publicly thank the PBD Community Preservation Committee. Last Wednesday, they voted to award the center school $32,000 to basically rebuild the playground back there. As we know, it was in rough shape. It was repaved last year, and in doing so, they lost all the stencils that the kids used, you know, to play games, hopscotch, and so forth. And also, last spring, the slide in the toddler park was, well, not toddler park, the park was damaged beyond repair, and it was a danger. So the PBD Community Preservation Committee really stepped up, awarded us this grant, and I just wanted to publicly thank them for it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Amico. Great. Special Education Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympio?
Yes, thank you. We have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night at 6:00, right here at the Higgins.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Olympio. Mrs. Dunn?
Mr. Chairman, I forgot one other item on the liaison. There's a parent advisory board meeting on Monday, October 1st, here at Higgins at 7:00 p.m. It's the first meeting of the year.
Great. Thank you. Okay. New business we'll handle in the regular course for the next meeting. The next meeting is October 9th. Is that correct? October 9th? October 9th? We're already into October soon. All right. Thank you for a good meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor? It's a vote. Thank you.